Is that Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday.
So you're going to Tiffany and.
Yes.
Yeah, we have dinner.
A year.
A year.
At least, yeah, at least a year.
At least a year.
On our part.
Last time before eight. Oh, well, let's see, see how it had planned in your.
Yeah.
So the whole.
And then we.
Well, we have the two by two by two by two things. And. Two by four, many hours. And then my, my son is here. My daughter's.
There he is. You remember this car was parked. I heard.
It says six o'clock.
I heard you were in the house. There's a bed in the house. Jamie, are you all set? You're all set?
Yeah, we're good.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, April 18th, and this is a special strategic planning meeting. And with that, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Rivers.
President.
Councilmember Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to public comment pursuant to the California Government Code, Section 549, 54.3A. Members of the public wishing to address the council or board may do so at the beginning of this special meeting, and such comments shall be limited to the special meeting topic. Anybody wishing to speak on the special meeting? I am not seeing anyone right, nope. Okay, all right. And then, anyone on Zoom?
Currently no attendees on Zoom, so that'll end public comment. Mayor Harvey.
All right, thank you. Then I will bring it back, and we will move forward on the study session. And the first item is the budget study session for special revenues and internal service funds for fiscal year 2324. And is, who's gonna answer that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take over everything this time.
All right.
So good evening, Mayor, council members, fellow staff and public. This first part of our budget study session will be focusing on the special revenue funds and the internal service funds for the city. I'm gonna make sure I keep up with the slides this time. I did, I did turn it on. Okay. Perfect. So within the presentation, we'll cover the tentative budget schedule. And I do apologize that the initial workbooks that were included within the agenda did have some incorrect data within primarily the change columns. Thank you, Councilmember Ford, for finding those and helping me get those addressed. So we did have amended workbooks that were provided and updated and are included within the, okay, the agenda packet, items provided after it was published. So now these properly reflect the changes between the budgets with the subtotals as well. And if you require new worksheets, they are printed at the back of the room, and we can also distribute them. And again, they will be, they are published online. So as I said earlier, we are covering in this section the special revenues as well as the internal service funds. I feel like I'm not doing this right this time. Okay. I'm gonna go too fast. There we go. So for tentative schedule, this budget cycle started back on March 7th, where the council had our first strategic planning session. Then on April 4th, we had our first study session going over the goals and objectives as well as the general fund revenues and expenses. Now we're on our second budget study session, where we'll go over the, all the other funds. And our goal is to have the budget ready for adoption next month, May 25th is our goal. So for special revenue funds, what are they? These are really funds that are dedicated for restricted use and for a specific purpose. And these can be legally restricted because of the type of revenue they are or designated by council as a specific restricted, specific purpose fund. Included in this slide is the summary of the special revenue funds as they are managed by different departments. Additionally, within the agenda packet, there in pages 21 and 22 are a listing of the special revenue funds with a description as to the purpose for these funds. So you can show you what the revenues are coming in from as well as what they are expended for in line with those special purposes. So looking at the workbooks for the special revenue funds, most balances are consistent with prior years with minor increases and decreases with exceptions for the following. And the slide included here is for the grants fund. So historically, the grants has been grouped with our capital funds, and that was primarily due to this being the source of the grants fund. However, in recent years, this has changed, and the classification is better depicted as just a special revenues as designated by our auditors because we do have operational grants that we are getting in specifically around housing and emergency operations that we are getting grants from. So it serves both capital and operations. So it is reclassified now as a special revenue fund. Major changes with the special revenues are, for the grants, are due to the grants that are being received in. And so we have tentatively included within the workbook, the REAP grants expansion. So we expect that to hopefully increase in the size of the grant we're gonna be able to get as well as including the Sunflower Park grant. We also have projects that were in design, and we're including this in the grants fund because we're expecting to have grants come in to fund those. And so we have to dedicate those expenses in the grants fund, even though they're currently being funded by other special revenues or general funds. And those are primarily the Highway 116 West Sierra and the sidewalk gap closure project. The other special revenue highlights are primarily due to changes in revenue volatility. So gas tax, RMRA, traffic mitigation, Park and Lou. These funds all had changes based on the income that it's derived from. So gas taxes derive from volatility in gas tax, same as RMRA. Traffic mitigation fund is related to development fees as well as Park and Lou and bed tax and the inclusionary fund. Those are all revenue based on those pieces of development and/or derived by the gas tax. Separately, we have expenses that are changing on primarily the canine fund as well as the Disability Access and Education Revolving Fund, where there's really no projects planned for that fund. The canine fund, we do have the purchase and training of a new scent dog. That was a part of our projects for the next year, which are fully funded by contributions from Measure S and the general fund. And then the big change for bed tax and parks Measure M. Those are funds that we collect from development, and parks Measure M is the sales tax that we get through the county. And those, we get so little that we kind of end up holding on to much of the funds so that we can contribute them to a major project we have going on. We don't want to use those funds just for design. We want to show that we're using them for actual implementation of a project. So those are really being used for the Kattati Park Capital Project currently. The next piece is the landscape and lighting districts. These are managed by the Public Works and Engineering Department. The proposed budget included in here is based on the continuation of existing expenditures. The Public Works and Engineering staff are currently evaluating these accounts to derive the assessments. So the minor updates are gonna be brought back to council for their review and approval for the assessments. But as noted above, we identify and we know we're concerned about Fund 241, which is Zone 2 for Quail Hollow, which continues to be an area where expenditures exceed the assessment revenues. And so there is more information on that to come as we bring back the budget as well as the assessments going forward. So I just wanted to, go ahead.
So are you trying to say in a roundabout way that we're going to do something to address that? Because it's growing and growing and growing and growing, and it's never going to get better.
There's currently nothing programmed to deal with that. How, they are still contributing towards the expenses for that district. And so we'll, we'll talk more about that, but there's nothing really budgeted and planned currently to deal with that. But there's more to, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, just a structural deficit. So it's either, either, I mean, from a policy level, deciding whether we want to just make ongoing contributions from the general fund, just to backfill it, or, or ask all the residents if they want to increase their assessments, which seemed unlikely last time we had that conversation.
Well, because as it currently stands, their contributions don't even cover any of the current, they don't cover the current expenses year after year after year. And then I know that they had a, something that we had to spend a lot of money on. That certainly was never gonna cover it. But it just feels like at some point we have to do something. We can't let, you know, pretty soon it's gonna be $100,000, you know? And then what? I know that because it all sits in the landscape and lighting fund, it doesn't deplete the fund because others have overages. But it just feels like, how long do you let that go? Because the longer you let it go, the worse it gets.
Yeah.
I, I'll just keep saying it every year. I just.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, there's really no good solutions other than backfilling it with general fund or, or having the residents decide if they want to vote a higher assessment on themselves to cover the deficit.
But I don't even think that they have an acknowledgement that we're, we're basically floating that money for them. I, I don't even think that, that they know that we're, we're covering it. So it doesn't really even give them an opportunity to, to say, hey, maybe we should do something about it or not. I just feel like this has gone on for a while and that we should at least have a conversation with them.
Yeah, there's a handful like that, as you know.
Yeah, but this one is.
The, yeah, the outlier at the moment.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Just because I, I don't, I don't know the background on this, is it possible to, to learn what, what's going on? And then potentially we can maybe come up with ideas? Because I'm not, I don't even understand. I mean, I definitely see this and I definitely noticed it. But I don't understand why this started, how it's allowed to continue, what, what it means, aside from being in a deficit and the deficit getting worse every year.
If you look at the detail page in the budget, you can see, you know, what the revenues are, what we collect, what the expenses are. And because of the way the assessment is, and it doesn't have a growth on it, they fall behind because we've never raised their assessment. So the expenses are more than what they're contributing for what they're getting. And we did have in, what year was it? In 2021, they, was it the tree? Is that what the 20,000 was?
Tree and also landscaping. So this is the only myrtle.
Yeah. So they had a tree that needed to be removed, and they had some landscaping that was substandard. And because it was on one of our main thoroughfares, we made a choice to pay for that because the tree needed to be taken care of and the landscaping was in bad shape. But we still are letting this grow without having a conversation with them.
So, okay, so I guess I understand, you know, the decision was made to go into a deficit at that time, but why does it continue?
Because unless you go back and have a conversation with them and they agree to charge themselves in order to cover that, it will continue to grow. Because we're only allowed to charge them X number of dollars per parcel every year. It, it's set by the landscaping and lighting district, and it doesn't have an escalator on it, so it can't, it can't grow. Some of them grow each year. This, some of them do not. This is one that doesn't.
There isn't a, a regular agenda item we do every year to approve these budgets. Can we have that discussion then?
That would be awesome.
That would be my proposal, just so we can be ready with all the details about all the districts and look at all of that. I mean, you, you know, the mayor's outlined the basic problem here. Is that when they were built, we sign it, like the, the district was created with a, with a particular assessment with no inflation adjuster, and we're stuck with that. So, and so we.
So, yeah.
And it sounds like a decision was made to go into debt, and so it just continues on.
Right. Either that or let a large tree fall on houses and the city be liable. So, yeah. It wasn't much of a decision to be made.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying, I understand what happened.
But at some point, you have to have a discussion, is all I'm asking.
Just for your information, there, there is, there are neighborhoods right across the street from where these districts exist that were, did not have a landscape and lighting assessment imposed on them when they were created. So they get the same services for free. Just another factoid.
But we certainly can have that conversation when we bring back the, as Councilmember Ford proposes, and we bring back the.
Yeah, that would be.
Annual item.
Awesome.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and sorry to, to bring a red flag to everything. It's just one of those things, when you're talking budget, you're talking about special revenue funds. These are a component of those. And so just, and being aware that this is going to be something, yes, that does come back for a significant discussion because this is an assessment that is a public hearing, I believe, that we have to have around these. And so it does become a significant item and a venue for us to also have that discussion with that district.
And potentially the ones that are not included in it, like Laura was saying, right?
Well, it's tough because they have to impose it upon themselves, as far as I understand.
Okay, well, we can talk about that later.
Absolutely. We can provide also some, some guidance as to where the information on the landscaping lighting district can be found on the city website to find more information on, on those assessments and the reports for them because they are on there. So overall, special revenue funds are estimated slightly higher than the adopted budget based on the increased revenues with consistent expenditures. However, we are looking to match these funds with uses and slightly bring down that combined fund balance close to that 3.45 million. Fund balance is where we're looking at the end of 22, or, sorry, excuse me, 2324. And that's down from 4.4 million in 2122. So our adopted budget for 2223 to 2324 is really not significantly changed. However, is down as we're using a lot of these funds for our projects during 2223 as well as 2324. So moving on to internal service funds. These funds are those that support other funds. They are an enterprise funds, but we wanted to kind of group them in with the special revenue funds because they, they're a little bit easier to handle, they're smaller, and they're consistent. There's not significant changes over them. What these are used for, for the city is the vehicle replacement fund as well as the compensated absences fund. Overall, the internal service funds meet operational needs and have limited reserves. The vehicles scheduled for replacement are consistent with what is on our replacement schedule, except for the city truck, for the city hall truck, which continues to be scheduled for replacement, but due to its, due, it's scheduled for replacement due to its age. However, it's still in sufficient condition, it has limited miles, and so we're really continuing to push that out until we really need to replace that. Alternatively, the compensated absences fund is built out based on expectations for cash outs as well as retirements within a fiscal year. These costs are allocated based on the general FTE liability of those compensated absences balances. So digging in a little bit deeper, the vehicle replacement fund includes replacement, this is for 2324, of two police SUVs. We're possibly looking into EV, fuel-efficient EV for those replacements. As well as, we're still pending a public works dump truck. We did have a quote for those and put in for that, but it was never received due to, you know, them never getting an inventory. And so that is still included within the budget for 2324. We also anticipate having various equipment needs that might come up. So these are a little bit more than materials and supplies or tools that we would use. So minor equipment would need to be replaced and/or purchased as needed. And that is included at a limited amount as well as repairs and maintenance on the existing fleet. So the compensated absences fund, we're funding additional contributions to the fund for 2223 in expectation of future payouts in the near term, one to two to three years. We're hoping the sufficient fund balance is included to meet the expectation of these outflows. The increases for the expense side in 2324 includes both the increased rates as well as possible projected cash outs for the compensated absences. So I'm gonna stop there for questions around the tentative draft budgets for the special revenue funds and internal service funds. Do you take any questions?
Are the larger vehicles having the same kind of issues around getting them as normal, regular vehicles? The parts and the chips and all the stuff to build them? Are, are they in short supply like regular vehicles?
Well, I'd say like generally, the situation's improved in terms of general supply chain stuff. But it's kind of weird. I mean, some are still delayed for whatever reason. There's, like, you know, a vehicle's a, an assembly of thousands of parts, and any one of them is not available, the whole thing can't get delivered, so. Yeah, that seems to be the case with that one. It's just been on order for a long time. They're low-volume vehicles because they're just large kind of work, industrial trucks.
And they need lots of parts.
They need lots of parts, yeah. You need most of them, yeah.
Two acronym questions. Can you remind me what the REAP grant is?
REAP is?
Regional Early Action Planning Grant.
Goes with the LEAP and the SB2.
Yeah, so the city received two REAP grants. Sorry, there's been so many acronyms. I want to be sure. One was a $20,000 non-competitive grant that all jurisdictions of our size received. And that helped cover some of the costs of the housing element update. Separate from that, we received a competitive REAP grant of $50,000. That's intended to help fund the Centera Way specific plan. However, the budget numbers for that entire project were significantly exceeding that grant funding. And so we are, we haven't moved forward on formalizing acceptance of the grant or initializing the beginning of that project because we're trying to get some additional funds. And I have submitted another grant application to SCTA, and it's being reviewed. I'm sorry, not SCTA, ABAGMTC, and it's being reviewed currently. And I've been told we have a strong application.
Great. Thanks. And the other, was the one paired with the gas tax, RMRA?
Road Maintenance Repair Act. So it was an additional sales tax that was passed in 2017. Okay, yeah. So it was an additional, but it had to be separately accounted for and earmarked by project. So that's why we have a separate special fund for it because we do have to specifically say, whereas the rest of the gas tax can go to any street's projects.
Thank you.
You have to report and, and report it and actually indicate it on the, it's actually kind of funny because we have to report every year to the state what we did with the RMRA money. It's a figure with like ones, like one block of street, like this one right here. This is the one we did, you know?
This sidewalk block right here.
This one right here, here. You can put the letters on it. Okay. All right. Well, if there's no further questions, and if you're ready to move on to the next study session for Enterprise Water Sewer Funds. So again, this is a budget study session for fiscal year 2324, so looking into the future. I'm not gonna tire you with going through the tentative schedule. I included that because I wasn't sure which section we were gonna go over first, and I wanted to make sure it was included in whichever one we did first. The study information for this is the Enterprise Water Sewer Funds, including their specific capital funds. Because none the two shall mix, you have to keep your water, money within your water, your sewer funds within your sewer, general funds within your general operations that could be used. So separately, we also have the city capital projects that are not associated with water and sewer. And along with capital projects, we have the updated general fund schedule, which reflect the transfers out to these capital projects. So here again is the tentative budget schedule. I'm just gonna take this opportunity, since I already have a slide, to talk about how the budget is not a single couple months. This is a year-long process that we go through. As soon as we adopt the budget, we then have agenda items that are brought to council for budget amendments. We amend the budget, we bring quarterly reports back. we bring quarterly reports back, as to where we compare to our budget that we adopted, and then have a mid-year, and then we're already back into the budget study session again. So for anyone that's interested in learning more about the budget process and these sections, I highly recommend going to the city website, where there's a really cool video, as well as links to our adopted budget and even a budget brief document. Oh, I'm going to jump way ahead. Okay, so within this budget book, that's in our city website, and this is what's going to be included for our next budget book, we do provide the full goals and objectives for the city as directed by council, but additionally, to keep it simple and to link our department goals, we also categorize them graphically and in summarized form, as kind of is presented here. So I want to just take this opportunity, as this is provided, to take any suggestions at this time, and how these goals were summarized, we reviewed them again at our last study session, and this was kind of our take of, of where those are, and I wanted to see if there's any feedback on these summarized goals and objectives. Hearing none? Seeing none? Okay.
Can I just ask, what is proper development? What, what is that? Is that defined somewhere? Just, what do we consider proper?
Proper development, where?
I'm just seeing long-term vitality, says affordable and proper.
Affordable and proper.
I'm just curious what that means. I'm not, I'm not questioning that we want proper development, I'm just curious how that's defined.
So I think that would be further defined in those goals and objectives, so in the expanded form, that's the detail of that goal, is that it fits the city's desires for development, and that it fits our vision of, you know, what size housing, and where, you know, where these things should be and what it should look like. So that's what the proper, so that's what's expanded in that long version of that goal. Sorry, I don't have that goal ahead of me.
Maybe appropriate might be a better word?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not even questioning the word, I'm just, I just, it's the first time I've seen it, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a question, I know we were going to revisit the wording on community communications under climate change, is that something that's going to come back when we adopt the budget and have the actual budget book, like the full wording on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
It'll be in the, it'll be in the final document.
Okay.
Yeah.
It made noise when you did it, that's why, it sounded like you were...
Sure, yeah, the word proper sounds funny there to me, I like the word appropriate better, this is, this is the place for feedback on that summary, and I think that's, would be a nice change, but I also couldn't pull up our goals, the long form of our goals quickly enough.
I'll see if I can pull a, a better reflective word from that specific goal to fit that specifically, and then community communication, I, we can see what the revised final language for that goal will be, and make it kind of fit the coordination.
It sounds like, I mean, it sounds like appropriate is sort of the right intent, even if that's not the exact word that was used in the long form.
Mm-hmm.
In, in the short form, it seems to make, I agree with everything that's being said, seems to make more sense in the context, in the short form context.
Do you mean community outreach versus communications?
Oh, and that's for climate change, and I, we'll, we'll look at that and just make sure that those comments were incorporated.
Yeah, and the, and the quotes removed from that too, like, it's like in air quotes kind of thing, it's a little weird. For climate.
Climate action.
Yeah. You know, and I think what the, with this last one, I think what, what, I mean, and these are just very brief, so maybe it doesn't matter, but community safety and quality kind of sounds like the quality of the community, rather than the quality of the service, right?
Got it, yes.
Although we have equality community, I feel like that's not really what we intend to say by the goal.
Not what you're choosing, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It's good to get input, makes things better. Okay, so enterprise funds, for the city of Kattati, these funds are managed by definition in a similar fashion as a private business. So these include the water operations and capital, the wastewater or sewer operations and capital, as well as the internal service funds. Since we've already covered the internal service funds, we're just going to cover the water and wastewater. So both the water and wastewater operations fund require a maintenance of 33% reserve, which is provided for in the proposed budget. Each fund's revenues include the rate changes as adopted by council at the last rate study, which is a 218 process, was entered into last May, and this would be the second year of the five-year plan. The rate study is available on the city website and serves as a tentative plan for the utility funds. Consistent with the general fund, we try to remain as conservative with our revenues and expenditures as this estimated budget, and we're drafting everything to come forward. So jumping into the water fund, as an overview of operations, the assumptions that went into the budget study, or the budget worksheets, are determined by, the water rates are determined by the cost of delivering water and maintaining the infrastructure and equipment in order to properly treat and distribute water to our customers. The rate study was adopted in June 2022, and our, the rates are included and expected into these revenue assumptions. The inter-fund debt service is coming back to the general fund for the UAL contributions, so those are included within the expenditures piece, as well as the proposed capital projects for equipment improvements. So overall, the change is within the operations, sorry for the tiny font, again, looking at the, is consistent with the general fund, as we discussed previously, we have the one-time UAL ADP that was processed in 21, 22, and for the water fund, that was approximately a million dollars. The personnel budgeting is budgeted at full staffing, we have the allocation of the contract services that do also go to the water operations fund, and you'll see that again at the sewer fund, and we have the estimated increasing insurance, we're still pending final changes, we do have some tentative numbers, we're not included in here to keep it consistent with the general fund, but they will be included within the final adopted budget for at least our tentative ones we have for the insurance. We still have continued water conservation programs that we're funding, and we have the cost of water procurement, we have the water agency rates increasing of approximately 9.5%, but we do have an offsetting conservation effect, as well as the, so the cost of our water is going down as we use less water, and then there's also continued rain, so people are not investing in water for their lawns, which is also another piece of the expense for water. Unfortunately, it's also part of our revenues for water, so when we save more water, we receive less usage revenue, and this is where really our balanced approach on our rate study does help us, where we have a good mix of our variable usage rate, as well as our fixed rate for our water consumption. So we do have a reduced consumption, in order to keep our expectations of revenues consistent, as well as reduced connection fees due to unknown developments, though we do have developments that are planned, we don't know when they're going to come to fruition unfortunately currently, and so they are not included within the current worksheets. I think that covers everything I wanted to cover there. And then the water capital fund, the major projects for water are really fairly minor, as we are working towards other major projects down the line. We have the water SCADA system, though I said it's minor, it is really a significant thing that, that needs to get done to relocate our major system and upgrade it, and so that's a big piece that's going to be hopefully happening here fairly soon, and then continuing on to the next year. We also have the well 1A maintenance and the hydrant ATM project. We do have the portal mercantile iron replacement project that has been designed, but that's programmed into construction for 26, 2026, I believe, that's what I'm looking for in our, in our multi-year projects. So moving on to sewer or wastewater, the assumptions are almost exactly the same, for the continued decrease in consumption, but we'll also see continued decreased assumption due to our reaveraging, so as those people, as, as customers are using less water, we then re-average it the next year, so since we had so much rainfall during the winter season, versus even last year during the winter season, when it was really dry still, so people might have still been irrigating, this next year, we're going to see even less, because the reaveraging is going to bring them even farther down, and so that usage estimate that we use is going to be, we're expecting it to, to decrease for the next year as our base for consumption. So that's the only really significant difference within the budget assumptions for revenue, and the projects included within sewer are the replacement at Cypress in advance of the streets project, as well as their component of the SCADA upgrade and relocation program. So again, consistent with the water fund, we have the one-time UAL ADP, additional discretionary payment, AID CalPERS in 21, 22, we have budgeting at full staffing, allocated contract services with increasing insurance, the increased wastewater treatment, what was proposed in the budget was 6.8%, but we're really now seeing that it could be significantly lower, and so that will be revised in our final budget to bring us down to what the proposed rate is, I think we're almost looking at a flat 0% increase, so that's, that's, that will be nice for these funds. Changes in revenues, we have the increased rates per the rate study, reduced consumption for our winter season, as there's less irrigation, and continued conservation, as well as those reduced connection fees. So the water projects, so we have the water sewer system, the SCADA sewer system, their piece of it, the continued lateral repairs, so we are proposing to continue doing some lateral repairs, as well as the Cypress Avenue replacement. So I was going to stop here and take questions about the water and sewer funds.
I have two questions, first one is about the water expense from actually purchasing the water for our contractor, it looked like it's going up just a little bit, which is to be expected, and I'm assuming, but it's not going up that much, so I'm assuming that's because we're going to pump more, we're planning to pump more well water this year, or?
It's a combination, so the current year, the 22, 23, is going down, because we're not paying as much for water, because people are conserving, they don't need to irrigate, they're not, you know, we've been in a drought, where people have been watering their landscape, have been, if they can afford it, they've been continuing to use water, and they're not doing that, because they don't need to currently, and so there is that reduction in their cost for us paying for that water, but there is the offset also of us doing some pumping, and so that's where you'll see the increase in cost for our PG&E, so our water, the utility costs there, so that 20,000 there
Okay.
That's the increased PG&E, because it costs us electricity to pump well water.
Okay, and I had mentioned this to Damian, and I'll bring it up at the proper time in the future agenda items next week, but I'm hoping for us to have a public presentation and discussion about just the data about our groundwater levels, so that we can be informed and show the community that we're keeping an eye on that and not overpumping, and I don't think we are, but I'd like, just like to have a public, public discussion about it, because we, at least I constantly get people saying, how are we building more housing? We don't have the water, how are we going to get the water? So I think it'd be good to, to show that we're discussing that and really thinking about it. And then my second question was about the wastewater, are we seeing, how, how are we doing on our repairs? I remember the very unpleasant word gushers coming up at some point, how are we, are we at a point yet where we're seeing any savings from repairing sewage lines, reducing the infiltration, so we're not like paying for as much water that's seeping in, or are those sort of savings we should expect to see farther down the line in the, in the
It's too early right now to see any effects of it, we're, we're definitely making progress in that we're increasing the reliability, decreasing the likelihood of, you know, sinkholes happening, or, you know, these catastrophic failures, there's one over on Commerce that we found ahead of time, by doing a video of the sewer, and then we found that it had no bottom to it, and that's why we kept pulling out gravel, but, so we want to be as proactive as we can, but as, in terms of reducing the, the excess, excess rainwater and inflow, I think that's going to be measured over the long term, like, like five, 10 years.
Thank you.
Is that all? So Craig, you might not know this question, but the, the rate for the water that we pay from the water agency is .004, and the water that we're pumping is not free, we have to pay for, as you point out, electricity, but we also have to pay to the groundwater agency. Do we know, do we have a price per gallon on that water? I don't remember seeing anything that put a price per gallon on that.
We don't, it's, it's something on our to-do list, is to calculate that number, I suspect it's
It would be nice to kind of...
Suspect it's cheaper than
Okay.
The water agency do it, so it is a tool for us to counterbalance the higher increase in the snowmobile water rate.
Yeah, it would be nice at some point, I think, to kind of put a, put a number on it. Did you have questions, Soli? So now on to capital projects, and so we did add a note on the slide that we did have the multi-year plan presented to the planning commission on May 16th, we being Craig, the royal we. So city staff have continued to focus on the streets improvement plans using our pavement management plan, so there's been significant funding and planning and design, and strategically thinking about water and sewer lines when they need to get replaced in order to be able to do the streets, and the major projects that we have planned for 23, 24 are the streets improvements project, which is, I'm flaking on which streets those are, the Redwood Drive and Cypress, and, as well as design, initial design work starting for the Highway 116, West Kattati Avenue intersection. We still also have continued bicycle, pedestrian traffic safety improvements that get incorporated into these projects. We additionally have the Gateway Marquee included for approximately 83,000, and the sidewalk gap closure project, which again is partially grant funded, and so that's expected to start in the next fiscal year as well. Next major improvements the city has been making is really in our parks capital projects. We're continuing to just really go into those projects using our parks plan, so we will be completing out the Kattati Park improvements, we're expecting just some minor expenses still to trickle in through 23, 24. We have design planned for both Putnam Park, as well as the Rhonda Falletti Ranch barns, and then we're also looking to design and start build the Sunflower Park, specifically around hopefully getting some grant matching funds for working on that project.
on that project. So this has a total of approximately 1.5 million for the next budget year. As well, the city is proposing to continue improvements around the Civic Center, and for 2324, this is primarily the parking lot reconfiguration project, which we're estimating at a budgeted $250,000. And that's really it for our capital projects. The full list of projects for the single year as well as the multi-year are included in Packet Pages 88 through 100. And there's a full detail of the projects, which also include plan consistency, detailed attachments and maps, and that's included in our final digital budget book, as well as our project pages located on our city website. As the projects roll out, as we go into design, people are interested in them, we push them out to the city website, so people can even register to, on those different projects to get notified when things change on that project page.
Just so I'm clear, the Putnam Park improvements are just designs here? Is that?
I, yes.
We can't build all that?
That's, that's just design, exactly. No, that's a lot of project.
Yeah. Oh, are the level-two chargers in this parking lot public or city use?
So that's, that's like the most interesting part of that whole project to me, like the paving is like whatever. I don't really care that much about it, but the level-two chargers, yeah, so there would be a combination of, of stuff for city vehicles, and the rest would likely be some combination of, we haven't figured all that out yet, but it'd be some combination of public and potentially not public chargers.
Angela, the item that's Gateway La Plaza Marquee.
Yes.
Did I read correctly that that also includes the individual post signs at the different entrances that are so sad?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
The so sad signs. How good. Just wanted to be sure. They're so sad.
Yes, those were advanced as a part of that.
I just wanted to ask the sidewalk gap closures, is that for the full mile and a half that is our city, or is it just particular places?
No, this is a grant project for the.
Yeah, it's particular places around the city.
Yeah, over the years, we've collected public comment on where the gaps are most beneficial to us, and so it's scattered all over the city, these high priority gap closure projects. And so we made that submittal to the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and we're in line for a grant for that money, for that project.
You said high priority areas? Is that what you said?
Sidewalk gap closures.
Right, okay. So it was determined by public comment, is that what you said?
Yes, every day we receive public comment on.
Okay.
deficiencies around the city, and so we make a list of them and keep track of, like, for example, last night at the Planning Commission, we received additional input when we were speaking specifically about bike pedestrian, how that's incorporated into our paving projects. And so we, we received input, and we were adding that to, to the list.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm hoping Wes Kattati is on that list because it's super dangerous. Thank you.
Yeah, it is. It's on the list. It's, I came, I mean, primarily comes from the Bike and Ped Master Plan and the LRSP, and then it'll all be kind of re-aggregated again with the update. Bike and Ped Master Plan.
Okay, thank you. Is that listed somewhere? Like which ones are included?
Yes, the entire CIP is online, and there's a page dedicated to each project, and the page has attachments to it. And for the sidewalk gap closure, you'll see an attachment showing each segment that's included. And then we're even now adding to that list.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll go check it out.
I'll say once the CIP is actually adopted with the budget, then we're going to make some others available, too. So there's stuff that's draft that hasn't been published publicly yet, but it's in the CIP. And so when the council approves it, it'll all be visible publicly then at that point.
Craig, can you remind me how often we update the LRSP?
How we update it?
How often?
Oh, five years.
Five years, okay. I was, couldn't remember. Thank you. Any other questions? There you go, Angela. Okay.
So last but not least, we want to speak about the changes for the general fund. So overall transfers out are decreasing 8% from the current year as major projects are completed and new projects are being rolled out, as we just discussed. Alternatively, transfers in for 2223 are being adjusted up due to refunding to the general fund from the streets transfers, which were previously made by the general fund, which are now covered by that street improvement fund. And so it's really just paying back that general fund for the initial cash flow it needed in order to keep these projects going. This is a one-time transaction, thus it's not included in future balances for these transfers. Overall, the general fund still maintains its 25% reserve, and we're still fine-tuning balances, including, of course, the insurance. And so there will be slight changes and modifications. However, this is pretty much in line with what we expect it to come in at. The other thing I did want to point out is included in the slide, so when we did the general fund study session before, the other sources and uses were kind of included up and above within the operations, but now they're properly included, they're kind of removed down from the operations down into other pieces. And so that's just kind of those inter-fund loans, which were previously included above. So if you were tying out the operating expense from the prior study session to the current session, those are the changes. It's just moving those from operating expenses, or revenues, excuse me, operating revenues down into other income. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question on this slide. Is that on the left-hand column, the bottom one, is it supposed to be 2023, 2024?
Yes, it is. That's the typo I was expecting Mayor Harvey to bring to me. Sorry. Yes, so the bottom column for transfers out, the bottom second is supposed to be 2324 transfers out, and that's the detail of where those transfers out from the general fund are going to. So you can see a significant component is going to our grants funds. As we are continuing to get grants, we have to match those grants. So that does take that general fund contributions for those.
And then I think there's, might be an extra preposition on the other sources/uses with to water. I'm not sure which.
Oh. Yeah.
Is, I don't know if it's a typo on transfers out, the top column, it says, is it 1.73 million, or is it K?
Thousand. So it's, it's, sorry, yeah, that's supposed to be million, 1.73 million.
Million, okay. One point, is it right? It had a K on it.
It's 1,730 K or 1.73?
Would be the same thing. Yeah, it's just a comma instead of a decimal point. Yeah, so it's the same. It's like, right, yeah. Sorry, I tried to keep them all as thousands so they were consistent across all of them. Then it is confusing because sometimes we talk in millions, sometimes we talk in, yeah.
I was just going to say, if you come to astronomy class, you have to deal with billions and trillions, too.
Oh, no. Too many zeros.
Infinitum. That's a little bit too much. So really, in conclusion, the, the budget is balanced. We're maintaining prudent fund balances. We're continuing to really closely monitor, especially, you know, water and sewer funds, as we need to make sure we're, we're above that 33% threshold, as well the general fund well above that 25% threshold that we need to maintain for our operating security. We're going to continue to update council on any significant budgetary changes prior to budget adoption. So if there's any significant items, you know, that would maybe be something that would be in the city manager's report, you know, hey, we're still working on budget, you know, here's some significant things that kind of came up that we didn't previously talk about and maybe expect. However, we're, we're not expecting anything really, so I wouldn't expect any updates that haven't already been discussed because again, a budget is a plan, and the plans are subject to change. And so we really want to have the best plan possible, but it's not the end-all, be-all of what we are going to be. Things change, and so we want to make sure we're adaptable to that. We're, again, operating reserve requirements are being met, and we are continuing to be committed to being prudent in integrity and the management of these public funds and the transparency of that. So it's really where we want to point people to our budget that's online, so you can see what it looked like last year, what we're looking to develop for this year, as well as, again, all those projects that we're planning on rolling out. So kind of a last opportunity, not last opportunity, because we'll, we'll be bringing back the budget in its full form. We'll always take comments and suggestions and questions, but if there's anything else at this point in time.
I just, I just want to say thank you. This looked like a whole lot of work, and you made it very easy to understand, so thank you. And I appreciate having the future capital projects in there so we can kind of see, because people ask about different ones, and it's nice to have them in there so you can.
It's hard to just look at one year and go, oh, that's all we're doing. It's like, no, it's all, it's all a part of a big, big plan, yeah.
Yeah, that number's pretty big when you look at the rest of it. It's a big number.
You could see why we can't do it all in one.
Exactly. So. Is that all you have, Angela?
That's all I have.
Does anyone have anything else for Angela and/or Noah and/or Craig and/or Damian? No?
I have, I have one quick thing before you, for you all go. Just, the last, last week, I talked about the restriping of the intersection at 116 and Old Redwood Highway. So they did the temporary, like stick-down things, the little stick-down reflectors to show where the lanes are going to go, but they weren't able to, they call them floppies. I don't know if it's a technical term, but. They're called floppies.
The technical term is floppies?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't want to say it. I was trying to think of another word for it to make it sound more impressive, but the little things that stick down on the asphalt that reflect, or temporary construction kind of things. Anyway, they, they were delayed by day because of the rain. They weren't able to stripe in the rain for obvious reasons, and so they should be able to do it tonight. Nine o'clock. Yeah, so if you want to see someone stripe, you can go out there at nine o'clock.
I was wondering what that noise was last night. I'm like, is something turned on? Am I, turn on the light? Oh, my God, it's raining. Yeah, yeah. Well, no, really, no kidding. Was there any information received after the agenda was posted, Kevin?
There were the updated budget books that Angela mentioned, and those are available in print in the room at this time and on the web agenda.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else? Then I will call this meeting adjourned at 6:59. Wow.